Good evening. At this time, I would like to call the Organized Committee to Order. Tonight is a joint meeting of the Organized Committee on Downtown Economic Growth. We are discussing the Council Order of 2016-267. This is an order relative to land disposition agreement parcel R1, the meeting of the current committees called.
Counselor Kane.
Present.
Counselor Gold.
Present.
Counselor Taylor.
Present.
Counselor Kent.
Present.
Counselor Harris.
Present.
Counselor Hughes.
Present.
Counselor Yang.
Present.
And our meeting law, pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording if this public need it, or may transmit the meeting through the media. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present in our deemed acknowledged and permitted role.
At this time, I would like to call Mr. Bill Aguirre for to the podium. This is the fourth meeting of the Organized Committee relative to this council order, and I would like Mr. Aguirre to provide an update as to where we've been last in regards to this matter. Thank you, Mr. Aguirre.
Thank you very much, Chairman Chairwoman, through you to your colleagues on the committee and the council. Thank you all for your perseverance through this process. It has been a long process, and I must confess, certainly, it's been a complicated process that then, as I've said in prior testimony, nothing easy whatsoever about the script dealing with a number of state laws which are not easily controlled. And in many ways, I liken this to a trial, a long trial. And a lot of testimony, a lot of evidence has come before the council, which is not easy to deal with. And I might also add, it's not easy for press in condensed version that is required to condense some of the proceedings that occurred before the council. But I'd like to know if worthwhile and efficient use of our time of this final committee meeting on this subject would be for me to do some ancions of key points that have been made during the course of the four proceedings that occurred. Our experts have presented detailed explanations concerning the issues related to the LBA, the companion Section 6A agreement that's required of the Mass General Law 121A for payments in lieu of payments in lieu of taxes. And that, in many respects, in and of itself, is a bit of a misnomer. And I think it's important, both for the council and for the public, for me to clarify some misimpressions that may have arisen through this lengthy process where people may not have had an opportunity to see all of the information that was disclosed and submitted to the council during the course of the last two months since it was submitted to the council. And finally, I'd like to thank the members of the council throughout this process. Each of you have been engaged, you've asked cogent questions, you've pursued your fiduciary duties to perform due diligence on the proposal before you, on the information that's been placed before you. And we in the administration do appreciate your devotion to that fiduciary duty and that you play an important role as the legislative body for this city. And the administration respects that. And my experience in government over the last forty years has been that when the executive branch realizes the appropriate role and involvement of the legislative branch and cooperates with that, that the public gets a better product. The public gets a product that is the sum result of our joint efforts to fulfill our obligations to protect the taxpayer. And equally, I want to emphasize that as a public officer for the city, as is Mr. Faxis and Mr. Stevens, we possess that same devotion to protecting the taxpayer's dollar, to protecting the public interest. And give our zeal to make it certain that when we are negotiating any agreement on behalf of the city that is going to come to you for review and approval, that we do so with that devotion to duty, the same devotion to duty that you have on the council. And of course, your, in our time circumstances, we're in full-time circumstances, but I can say that over the course of this last few months, in interacting with each of the members of the council, your questions have been informative to me, informative to Mr. Faxis and the planning department as to how best we can fulfill our objective to reinvigorate the economic engine of Quincy here in the downtown area. And so, I'd like to start from ground zero. And ground zero, really, is that 13,526 square feet of the Hancock lot that is a practical matter today and for many years, other than a paltry amount of money for the fifty or so, sixty cars that are parked there periodically during the course of a day, a week, a month, a year. Replace that with a project that is going to assist the city in, really, catalyzing the economic development downtown. Several members of the council who were present prior to the new council's stable office at the beginning of this year went through the lengthy process with street works. And subsequent to that process, there was a study that was conducted by real estate experts to give the city guidance on how it should proceed post-streetworks. And part of those recommendations were to increase the density downtown. And as you look at ground zero, the Hancock lot, in putting together this proposal, what we've attempted to do is take a small a chunk of that lot as is possible for the fifteen-story tower that's proposed, so that the bulk of the lot could be available for other developments that are prospective in the future. And that because they are not as dense as this, they will take up more of that ground, that valuable ground that we're talking about. And I know that the council has been indulgent in the sense that we only received the appraisal of two weeks ago, and you've only had that period of time to review it. And there were reasons for that, a number of reasons for that, over and above the complexity of the model that was put together by our expert Pam McKinney. And I know each of you had a little problem with that hypothetical. And I have to confess, in the open here, so did I. I had difficulty understanding the premise. And I had to undergo a tutorial by Pam and by another one of our experts, Craig Seymour from RKG, who is a certified appraiser, and Mr. O'Connell, the proposed developer. When the number was produced, he bought. He had a problem. He's in business. And so, I have a more simplistic approach, infiting the fact that I have no expertise in this area, to looking at the appraisal. And I looked at the comps, the comparable properties. And for me, the first one that came readily in mind was 22 Mechanic Street. That came readily in mind because that was Jim of the planning board going to approve. And so, that was the first one I looked at. And it's contained in the appraisal that was deducted for the city by Allen Foster. And it disclosed, it's part of the packet, that the developer of that parcel purchased 26,155 square feet, consisted of two components, a parking lot, and as we all know, it's literally diagonally across the street from the Hancock lot, and one home. And for 26,155 square feet, double the size of the lot, parcel, we're talking, the size of the lot, they paid $1,069,000, which worked out to be $31,441 per units for the number of units, thirty-four, that they proposed when they were calling our hypotheticals. The other comparable, not far from Mechanic Street, is the site of the former Beth El Temple, intersection of Hancock Street and Fernsbrough Parkway, and known as 1003 Hancock Street. And in that instance, the developer purchased 94,000 square, seven times as large as the 13,526 square feet we're proposing to dispose of. And they paid $2,090,000, and then had to demolish the temple that was on site, as incidentally, 22 Mechanic Street had demolished a single-family residence that was on that site. And that's the fifty-four, fifty-three apartments that works out to a per-unit price of $39,434 per unit. Now, we come to the appraisal that was done by Mr. Foster for our parcel, subject to disposal. And I might add that neither I nor Mr. Faxis nor anyone from the administration spoke to Mr. Foster during the course of his appraisal. It's a completely independent appraiser. He has previously done work for the city of Quincy during some of our prior activities. And so, he went through his process predicated on the hypothetical that was put together by agreement between he and Pam McKinney and others as to what the market would bear. I might also add, in talking with prospective developers, we know what they want to build. They all want to build the same thing. But we're looking at the prospects for block upon block of the same-looking buildings. If you drive through South Boston, you can see some of that on the side streets, on East 3rd Street, and some of those streets going there. A lot of them just look the same, and that's what the market has been bringing to us. This particular project that we're talking about is an iconic structure that we believe is going to be a magnet for development and is, as Pam said, going to be an anchor tenant for the garage. I think we've all agreed in our discussions here that that garage is an indispensable element for any future development that's going to occur here in the city. Those that are already proposed, as well as new ones, significant new ones, that are on the horizon across the street in what had been the Ross Road area. So for that 13,524 square feet, the appraisal plan value came in at $1,965,500. So that's a little tiny bit less than the developer paid for a parcel seven times as large, just five blocks away from my standpoint, a lovelier location, and a block away, twice as much as the developer developed that and paid only $1,069,000. Now, there's an offset to that 1.965, and that is that Mr. O'Connell had agreed to build at his expense a public park, which is part of the aspirational approach that we've taken to not only building up our downtown, but keeping it beautiful and opening up additional new spaces the best we can, when we can, how we can. And here was the way to do it. And we also agreed to end the construction of that park, as validated by our consultants, we're incurring intimately familiar with virtually areas that were drawn on that lot. Their estimate for the construction was $535,000. That's real money that the developer is going to pay, but the city is not going to. The developer further agreed to maintain that park thereafter over forty-year period. And both our parks department and what it encouraged estimated the value of that over the course of forty years for the type of park we're talking about would be $490,000. That would leave an estimated market value of $940,500 or the $1,965,500. That's all real money this developer will pay. The issue's been raised, and it's a legitimate issue, as to why we didn't contemplate leasing while we did. That was contemplated in the beginning. And there were several issues with that. First, the proposed developer is looking for, looking for a forty-year financing package from, from Hidjul, the first forty-year financing package. But to make the numbers work, would require ninety-nine years. But more importantly, from the city's standpoint, it's almost, it's almost like, why the lottery gives people a choice of taking a lump sum or having it paid out over the lifetime. Why would the city not want to get its $940,000 as a lump sum upfront cash on the barricade for this piece of property? We don't want to repurchase that property. We don't want to preserve that property. We want to develop that property. We want someone capable of developing that property and develop it properly. And so, it was in the city's best interest to look at not leasing it, but selling it outright, selling it and free. And that's why we made that approach as we do. And we conferred, of course, with our experts, and they conferred that that was the best way to approach this. And we believe that we received, will receive, in the total financial package of $1,965,000, fair market value. I mentioned Mr. O'Connell bought that at it. He conferred with his experts. He and I discussed these comps, because those comps gave him cause for lots. And these are particularly the parcel, particularly the synagogue was, essentially being so substantially larger than the parcel he acquired under our agreement. That's when he, he came back and talked to Pam at some point or two, and to others, and he decided to proceed with the transaction. We all know that this has been going on for nearly two years. My experience of the year that I've been involved is that Mr. O'Connell has been always reasonable, and he's been a paragon of patience because for a whole host of reasons, none of which, incidentally, had to do with the council, but had to do with legal difficulties that were left for us to resolve after the demise of streetworks. And that's why I, along with an esteemed colleague, Bill Kennedy, from Nuthoodlin, he and I served together in Massachusetts State Government, we wrote a lot of legislation together, reenacted a lot of legislation together. And I'm pleased to report that working once again, particularly with the city's legislative delegation, and the comp action by this law, improving the homeowners petition, our legislative delegation led by Mayor Delia Mariano and Senator Keenan, along with other members of the delegation, were able to have this enacted by the legislature. And of course, the mayor, working directly with the governor, lieutenant governor, was able to get the administration support ahead of enacting the law. And we needed to do that to overcome a whole host of challenges that essentially were going to prevent us from proceeding with the project, because there were wonderful tools that had been crafted in the prior law. Unfortunately, all those tools were relevant to streetworks. None of them would be relevant to a new developer. But the opportunities we saw, and we arranged for Mr. Seymour to do a risk analysis, lost opportunity analysis, as to where we are today as a city, vis-à-vis our development efforts, and vis-à-vis the economic climate that we're in at the moment. We've had a good run since the recovery. We don't know how much longer that's going to last. And Mr. O'Connell and virtually all the other developers have been very uneasy about the prospects for rates, interest rates to rise, which could jeopardize any one of these projects. So Mr. Seymour, I think, made a compelling case that to lose any one of these projects at this juncture, after it's taken us this long to get here, would be really an economic tragedy for this city and its aspirations to revitalize the downtown. The next issue that probably needs, or need definitely needs to be addressed, particularly by our colleagues and pets, is to disabuse the public of any misimpression that in addition to paying $1.9 million for purchases of property, that somehow the developer is not going to be making payments to the city in lieu of taxes. Yes, there is an incentive for Mr. O'Connell to proceed with this project. And the incentive is to those who are taking the risk, rolling the dice. And that's what Mr. O'Connell's doing. And I don't want to have him leave tables. I want to keep him at the table, but we've kept his feet to the fire. And as I said earlier, he's been very reasonable in terms of how he approached these negotiations as to what the needs of the city are. And we negotiated, as is required by the law, the so-called Section 6A agreement that has a form for the payments that the developer will make to the city over the life of the 121A agreement, which would be forty years, coinciding with financing leasing from HUD. And that those payments would constitute approximately ten percent of all of the revenues generated by that project. I might add gross revenues, not net gross revenues, that that project will generate over the course of its lifespan. And in the possibility, the realm of possibility, that they are unable to make, it's a maximum of one or the other, unable to make the ten percent payments, there is a floor, there's a minimum amount that they must pay, and that amount is calculated to ensure that the city recovers, that it covers its basic costs. Our core approach to this was to make certain that, at the very least, if everything went wrong, the city would be made good. And at the very most, that the city would prosper according to the prosperity of this project. And so, we, we put together a formula. The formula was attached to the 6A agreement. I hopefully emailed it to all of you over the weekend, but I do know from a couple of counselors that my attachment, they may have had difficulty holding the attachment. I asked the clerk of committee, Ms. Manning, if she would make copies for your package to see, necessarily to see those schedules. And that those schedules show, starting in year three, that the in lieu of taxes payments are compared to what that same property would be paying in taxes, ad valorem, if the forty-eight units were constructed, as had been in the hypothesis. And starting with the first year, under the ad valorem system, there would be a $180,000, a $118,000 payment in ad valorem taxes versus a $251,785 in lieu of tax payment directly to the city. The next year, the fourth year, which is referred to as the stabilization year, that prior year projects fifty percent occupancy, the fourth year is when it would be fully occupied, that the rate under ad valorem would be $185,441 for that year. Under in lieu of taxes, it would be $412,476. And from there on, virtually every single year, assuming that there's no tax to do, and you had to go to the minimum thing, the in lieu of taxes would exceed the ad valorem taxes. I might also point out that Council of Palmucci and others called to my attention that at the beginning of 2017, there appears to be three zilos for each of those years as to the payments. Well, 2017, that's accurate, because we are projecting that this project would commence construction sometime in the fall. So basically, you're going to have a hole in the ground in the remainder of 2017, you know, assuming they start when the projection establishes in September. However, for the next two years, when it's in various forms of construction, you will note there's a notation for $25,000. That $25,000, and I wish this was simpler, but that $25,000 is a so-called mandatory excise payment that the developer makes to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Department of Revenue. And then, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Department of Revenue conveys that payment to the city. So then, each of those years, the city gets that $25,000 payment only if it comes through the state. And it's just an idiosyncrasy of Mass General Law Chapter 21, 21. So it's important, because I know, having had a constituent letter brought to my, or emailed brought to my attention today by Council of Forests, that this is a cause of concern, obviously, for each of you representing their constituents vigilantly and vigorously as you do, but also for members of the public who are paying you do, but also for members of the public, who are paying an increase in their property taxes. And they want to make sure that anything we're doing downtown doesn't constitute a tax giveaway. And the facts, the agreements will ensure that that does not happen. We also wrote into the agreement other items, once again, under the rule of ensuring that the city would be made whole if something happens, if there's what's called a capital event, if the developer were to refinance the building, all payments due to the city related to fees that were payable to the city, construction fees which are being harmonized, will immediately come due, just as if you're closing, all your taxes will come due. And this is enforceable by a lien, a city of Quincy priority lien that has the same force as a lien on taxes. So it's a priority lien, that would be enforceable against the developer should, for one reason or another, during that capital event, they were unable to make those payments. So, that's the explanation with respect to the scheduled payments that are to be made. I'm hoping our colleagues in the press will feel free, will provide copies of these schedules to publish them, so that the public can see for themselves that the city is conducting itself in a responsible fashion to protect the taxpayers and to ensure future payments. Some of these, you know, future payments in 2057, I don't know how many of us are going to be here to see that, but are projected to go to a million dollars. And that's the economic argument we see. We also foresee that, for the time being, this is going to be the only 121A project we've been due, at Council of Palmucci's request, as you all know, recall, I produced a absolutely thrilling report on the nuances of MGL Chapter 121A, and made recommendations that they're to be used sparsely. There may be other tools in this toolbox related to commercial development, and I know a number of you expressed concern about commercial development. And we are currently working with FoxRock to attempt to fashion what will be a transformative commercial development in the area of the Ross Garage. And there will be tools that the state has available, by way of ITU funds and other funds, that become available for commercial development, and 121A may play a role. I know, in meeting with FoxRock people, they had discussions about, for example, North Station, Boston, now called TD Garden, now always called the Boston Garden, but those kinds of incentives will be utilized there, because of the public-private partnership, there's a public garage that's under TD Garden, serviced by Gulf North Station, and the garden, and I had been involved in my prior life in the Commonwealth on that project, because it required substantial permitting from the MDC at the time, because the walls are a butt shoulder. And so, I foresee that there's going to be a complex menu of tools that we will need to look at applying there. But all of our prospective developments really depend upon our ability to see this through, to get this underway. And finally, the, well, next to finally, the other advantage that Mr. Seymour outlines when he presented to the council several sessions ago, was the cost savings and time savings we would be able to realize by having Mr. O'Connell designated as the overseer of constructing the garage and other public improvements, we refer to it in the legalese as, you know, the garage and other pertinences, so those access roads, the egress roads, the public park, sidewalks, relocation of water and sewer lines, all of which need to be done. And we will be proposing to do through defunding, and if it wasn't we done through defunding, it'd be on the problem list. So, we will recognize significant cost savings and logistical savings, and once the law was enacted, we actually have met jointly with the company that's doing the preliminary design of the garage and preliminary cost estimates, and we had Mr. O'Connell's project manager, Artic Casey, and their contractor that they selected, Lee Kennedy, who is, as we all know, a leading base company, to work together on a design-build contract, so that we can begin, and we actually, in our first session, identified the number of savings that could be achieved by having the designer and the contractor work together for the design process, foresee problems, and foresee pricing issues. So, that's the kind of synergy that we believe that we're going to be able to achieve with that. And I think that's going to be very exciting for the city to have that approach to these projects. So, with that, that's sort of the overview, I know you probably have questions, I might say, my last point was, as I said next to final, but then the final is the land disposition agreement itself. I sent each of the councilors last week copies, both black line and blue line, and in my cover, you know, a resumé of changes that were made as a result of the review of this document by the council, special counsel for the city council, Mr. Shea, he had many excellent suggestions, we incorporated virtually all of them. I might add, including the city priority lien that I mentioned, which appears in several locations, I can certainly defer to Councilor Shea as to each of those, but they're called out in the blue line, and with that, I will include and be available for your questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gere, it was a lot of information, I do appreciate your recognizing City Council Attorney Jim Shea in the audience, we did speak with Mr. Shea and he gave an opportunity to give another update, he concurs with exactly what you said, all of his concerns have been incorporated into here. He is available if any of our council colleagues have questions. Absolutely.
Thank you, Madam President. You've been right, I appreciate you acknowledging our willingness process, and I do want to acknowledge that the few of us who are outside of the council, Jim Shea, the planning department, and of course, the consulting for all of your work on this. That being said, we have a group of knowledge, we see a lot of concerns from residents, and I think there are concerns that I and probably your sister, and Chair as well, right, so you are beginning the best deal for this piece of property, which you don't have, you know, we've got this, we've got the Ross Garage, so you have to be very mindful, very careful into our diligence to ensure that the project we're proposing is the best option for us. That being said, you know, that obviously one option is to do nothing, you know, right now we have a parking lot that is open from, you know, 9:00 AM past 9:00 PM, but it's charged past 9:00 PM, and it will be under an hour's free, over an hour's three dollars, and that's, I think it's somewhere over $15, so you have the max to make of $15 a day per car, per slot, so that's the revenue we're getting right now, we do absolutely nothing. The other option which you guys have proposed here, and Jim Shea has done a thorough job explaining to us, is doing the simple recording, which is 48 units, and get the revenue from that, and those payments are, like you said, in the first year that they actually do fill the occupancy, we're looking at about $180,000. The third option is the project we're looking at, now if we look at that, the revenue coming in that is $250,000 at its max, so we're looking at close to $100,000, more than what we see if we don't do this project, we go with the second option. With that, you know, there's another sheet that is very similar to the one that you are showing us, which shows those comparisons of the 48 unit versus this project, which is 124 units, and that shows in here the maximum direct annual payment to the city, once it becomes fully occupied in year four, which we are hoping will happen in year four, is $412,000 minus the extra tax, $386,000 in payments to the city. At a minimum, we're looking in that full occupancy year at $228,000, and that includes a payment of what the project would pay to the garage.
Correct.
Okay, so, that then leads me to the point of the garage and how that ties into this project, now, we've heard multiple times up here that the garage can't happen without this project, and the project can't happen without the garage, and the garage estimates are based off of $35,000, which is the average market rate cost to build out a space or above ground garage, and that's where this number comes from. Now, we don't know that we've entered in or submitted or committed to a contract that says that this garage is definitely, no question, going to cost $35,000 per slot. So, I know that, you know, in that time when you actually vote on this, we're still going to vote on and discuss the payment thing, and you're also going to vote on and discuss the garage, but that essentially means that the garage is still up in the air, so now let's say that it goes below market rate, and it costs us only $20,000 per space to build the garage, then we're making out, because he's committing to paying based off of $35,000 per unit, but let's say we don't pay that well, and for whatever reason, based off of the market in this new presidency, it costs us $45,000 to build out the space, then we're losing out in front of the city, because he committed to what is $35,000 for space, and we're paying $45,000, these are just numbers I'm throwing out there. So, to me, I can't get past that point of it, and that piece of it, whereas, you know, we're basing this number, the minimum payment off of what you believe is current market rate, we don't have national proposals signed in front of us that says, you are definitely going to have to pay $35,000, we could pay less, we could pay more, so why aren't we not looking at that piece of it first, and dictating, clarifying to both us and to the developer, this is how much the cost per space is going to be? So now we know, we can say for sure what those asset point payments will be, because right now it's based off of market estimates, it's not a natural cost.
The, as I mentioned in our private discussion, the developer is getting an incentive to roll his dice, to take this chance, to be the first one to come in. You are correct, and we had this discussion in the last session, the city will be presenting to the council a variety of options, as to what the garage's going to look like, how many spaces it's going to contain, based upon our best estimate of market demand, all the factors such as traffic. And the first one in, and this is common, the city is in the Commonwealth, and it's anticipated under 121A and 121B for that matter, that those who are the first in, who serve as catalysts for subsequent development, they get an incentive, and so that's the incentive this developer is getting for that, and the city can charge, since this is a tenant, a anchor tenant, can charge other rates for subsequent developers, they're not going to be taking the same kind of risk, they're not going to be subsidizing the financing of the garage, as this project will be, that's why we want the density, so that they can subsidize the cost of the garage. So, that's the advantage, that's the incentive.
Okay, so if that is the case, and we say this is based off of $35,000 cost to build the garage, our minimum payment, worst case scenario, is that, you know, $182,000 at half occupancy, and at full occupancy, $228,000, versus if we didn't do this project, we did just the 48 units, which they can just do here now anyways, we'd only get $185,000, so we're looking at, you know, more than what we would get, even if they don't become fully occupied, we don't get those revenues, we're still looking at that minimal number. Again, that's based off of, if we can get the garage built at $35,000 per space, and you said that they can't, that we can dictate what further rates would be for other projects coming down the pipe, now, again, my concern, and I'm going to repeat it, because I want to make sure I'm clear here, is that this makes sense to me, because we're making more and receiving more with this project than if we were to do 48 units, but the open piece here that's still up in the air, not determined, is the garage piece, so now, if we get charged less, if we come up with a cost less than $35,000 for each space, that's great, we can make out even more, but if it ends up paying even more, is there any way that you or the administration or somebody can say, if the garage cost ends up being more than what we predicted, to create this number here that's going to dictate the payments to us, can we make up that cost with the other developments that will be coming down, and then also losing out space from us, can we make up that cost through the other developments that are coming down the line?
That's what we will have to analyze as part of the analysis of the driving stuff.
I am seeing we're analyzing, but what I'm asking you is, if we're going to charge $35,000 per parking space to build, and that's the number we're getting here to determine the minimum payments to the city instead of taxes, and it ends up paying more than that for us, then I would like to see that difference made up with us charging the other developers more for the parking space, because then we're not shelling out that money for increments that...
Oh, I agree, I'm sorry, I thought I meant that.
Okay, I just want to make sure that that's what we're going to do, because we're committing to a cost that we don't know yet, and if we're committing to $35,000 per space, and it's a cost of less than what we're going to build, I want to know where we're making up for the slots.
That's our intention.
Okay, and that leads me to my second question, which has to do with the property itself, we keep referring to 13,526 square feet for the actual property size, and we keep referring to, you know, the cost of that specific size itself, and it's $940,000, which equals about $70 a square foot. In going through this, there are four different easements that were provided for this project, and those four separate easements totaled to be 32,000 square feet, so, I'm sorry, 18,000 square feet. So, the project's 13,000 square feet, we have 18,000 easements that we're getting in addition to this property, we're not asking for payments for additional square footage, but essentially the same size as the project itself, so are we getting payments for additional square footage?
Some of those easements are exclusive, and I forget exactly which ones are exclusive, but most of them are shared in the sidewalks, and there's portions of driveways which will be shared by other members of the public.
So, a lot of information there, which is substantial, I appreciate it. Looking at these easements, one of them is to factor the sidewalk in front, and the description does dictate that the developer is going to be responsible for building up that space, for beautifying that space, and that's going to essentially be the access point to the property, so that's one piece, that's parcel, 4,801 square feet, so that's how I understand. Surface easement B, which is 6,000 square feet, is going to be behind the property, that's all of those loading, or, you know, imagine the trash for the project as well as, you know, trucking it out and deliveries and whatnot. We see, though, it's 2,444 square feet, that's going to be parking for the project.
It's going to be parking that's for retail uses that are contemplated to be present in the building on the ground floor, for them to park in.
Okay, and so that easement B is going to be another 4,000 square feet, and that's going to be just for space for cars to come in and out.
Correct.
Again, that totals 18,000 square feet of easements, in addition to the 13,000 that we're paying us for, what are we getting for the 18,000 square feet that we're getting to this property, other than a loading unit, a couple of parking spaces, a drive for, and a beautified sidewalk?
What we're getting is the project, because, once again, there are incentives that are intended to this first project, and we believe that the fair market value of 1.9 is fair market value for easements, as well as the product, the tower itself.
So maybe I misunderstood what you said, but the money that we're getting for the project is based off of the 13,000 square feet of the property and not those easements?
Yes.
is based off of the thirteen thousand square feet of the property and not those easements.
We, we do not value the easements as part of that because we believe that between the exclusive easements and the, the public easements, that this is fair for the whole package. This is a fair sum for us to be asking for that.
I mean, the, the four thousand square feet of front end sidewalk, you know, they're making a big impact. It's going to make ours so easy to look nicer, really clean out that area. I mean, I'm familiar with that area. I've seen people, I've worked until two AM that are here before. And I've seen that it's dark and populated and, and, you know, if somebody else is going to come in and beautify that space, I'm happy about it. The back loading zone, I understand, you know, that size of the property we're having, you need a larger space to have in and out of dumpsters and all that. The, the, the two thousand four hundred and forty-four square footage that we're giving to the parking, and it's, we're already working on the garage aspect to then give away the two thousand square feet, which again, right now, we're looking at gaining seventy dollars a square foot. Why can't we charge seventy dollars a square foot for parking at their location for the project? It's, it's eighteen thousand square feet total we're looking at here that we're not charging the seventy dollars a square foot for. And it's valuable, and you said it's valuable, and we have to maximize the use. If there's eighteen thousand square feet, let's say minus the five thousand for surface sidewalks and the five thousand for the, for the loading, so eight thousand square feet that we're not contributing up, I think, as, as far as giving them and using them for that versus asking for payment for it.
We, we believe the amount that they're appraised is, is adequate for that piece of property in that project, that development. We have to provide, if, if we want to promote these deals, we want to promote commercial activity on the ground floors, we decided that we needed it. The people, unless they're going to go to the coffee shop, they're not going to want to go into the garage if they're going to go to this coffee shop. They don't want to park, or commute as we all do, run in and out of the coffee shop for the five minutes that it takes. And that's an amendment, we believe, for the citizens of the city to have that kind of free access to parking opportunities in the commercial downtown. We've attempted to increase the number of public parking spaces on the streets through the process that we've been embalting for the last year.
Okay, if that's the case, and I apologize for kind of the lack, but you just mentioned that that's going to be a public benefit and it's going to, you know, ensure that that additional four thousand square feet of retail is going to be more appealing and more attractive because now we have additional parking spaces. Is there any way we can guarantee that that will only be used for public parking and that residents aren't going to have, you know, friends and family come and see overnight and utilize these spaces knowing how, and, you know, and other than that unit? If they want to just park right out of the park.
We, we believe, we have agreed with the developer that it needs to be controlled spaces so that you don't.
So we are going to be controlled and, and used only for, for residents to come and use the space in whatever reason. So maybe science dictates that, or do you have a way to get it or park there?
Exactly, it will be through science.
Okay. And then again, you know, my hesitation coming into this largely has to do with the piece of garage. The payments that we're getting, I agree, it's down to two forms of payment. And like you said earlier, if we want to get away from the misunderstanding of us giving anything away, I see it more like, where do we get, it's, it's one option versus another. What are we getting as a city? One option is to, and build as is, forty-eight minutes. And we're looking at first year, which you have here, a hundred and eighty thousand at full occupancy. Versus option B that we're, we're discussing tonight. And at the least, we're getting a hundred, maybe two thousand at half occupancy, two hundred and twenty-eight. Two hundred and twenty-eight is much lower than a hundred, and that makes sense to me. Except that at minimum, two hundred and twenty-eight is dependent on the garage, which we, again, have not finalized yet. So again, just to clarify, you can commit to, to, to myself, as well as my fellow councilors here tonight, that this minimum will be guaranteed even if our cost exceeds thirty-five thousand dollars and made up by subsequent developments coming down and banking up for that cost. We're not going to let subsequent developments come and say, well, you gave it to the O'Connell for forty-five, or sorry, thirty-five thousand dollars a space, I want it for that amount as well. I, I would ask you to commit to letting them know that, you know, we are taking notice of this project, you're not taking notice of this project. And that's why the government's going to pay every product that, every product that comes after that will have to pay more than that. Again, to make up for it, you just have to see here and there somewhere.
Correct.
Okay. That's it. Thank you. And thank you again, Jim.
Thank you, Councilor.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'm going to do a brief recess of the ordinance committee to open and then subsequently recess the council meeting as we're opening at seven thirty. So please stay tuned.
Thank you.